Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Land Use Workshop 5, discussing fiscal fee approaches and mobility fees. Before we get started, I want to read into the record, please, Mr. Merida, or whoever else is here. Please be advised, this is from the Chairman, Les Miller, please be advised, I'll be out of town and therefore unable to attend the Thursday, February 20th workshop, land use workshop, and please read the reason for my absence into the record. Thank you very much. All right, let's call this meeting to order. First on the agenda, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, we have three topics today, not expecting any decisions today, mostly just as background educational material, with plenty of opportunity for the board to ask questions. We did, based on yesterday's decision, revise the agenda, the revised agenda went out, I guess, last night. So we have removed from the agenda Melissa Zornitas' presentation on the outreach, that will come at a later date, and that was to provide time to discuss mobility fees. We do have the consultant here, Neil Gunn Camp from Tindale Oliver, to do that, that will be the last item. The other two items are fiscal impact approach and fee analysis. So the fiscal impact approach was the result of a procurement to hire a consultant, which is Tischler-Byss, to look at the revenue and expenditure side of land use, decisions, land use, things, things that happened with land use, zoning, density, et cetera. So Carson Byss is here, he's going to talk about the methodology, because this work that they're doing will really be hand in hand with the 12-month work plans that you saw at the last workshop, and so, I mean, he'll come back periodically, but we're not expecting him to show up with any results in the next couple of months, but it kind of has to go hand in hand. The second item, then, the fee analysis approach, which was procured from Florida State University, is more pertinent to the impact fee decisions that you're going to be making in the next couple of months. And so today, Martin Nikas, Nikas, rather, from FSU, will give you some macro, kind of high-level thoughts and analysis of impact fees and revenues in the marketplace. They have more detailed work to do, and they'll bring that back April 1st, and so, but at least you'll have a generic overview today. And then, thirdly, mobility fees. So we've allotted 30 minutes for Carson Byss, 30 minutes for FSU, including Q and A, and then 45 minutes for mobility fee discussion. So, given the short timeframe since yesterday, we didn't submit any new materials online because it probably would have just been confusing. However, we do have, if you like, a copy of the slides that the mobility fee consultant used before at a couple of workshops, so it's not new material. Happy to give it to you, she may use it in her presentation, we can give you copies. Also, Lucia has some notes that she made for herself to introduce it. Again, if you want a copy of these, we can give it to you, I just didn't want to put it through the system and then result in some confusion about time deadlines and so forth. But, again, yesterday was the decision. So, anyway, with that, I will turn it over to, unless you have questions, I'll turn it over to Carson Byss from Tischler-Byss. Carson?
Welcome, Mr. Byss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm going to apologize in advance, I've got a sinus infection and I may-
You can keep it.
It's not contagious, but I may evolve into some coughing fits, I'll try not to. A little bit about us, and I've got a lot to cover in a short time, so some of these slides I may just, you know, have one takeaway from, but I put them in the presentation so you all would have it, some context. But about us, we specialize in fiscal and cost of growth issues, do fiscal impact and economic impact, impact fees, infrastructure financing strategies, as well as market strategies, and an analysis, as you can see here, we've got considerable Florida experience. The real takeaway from this slide is the top part, and that is, you know, most of the local governments we work with across the country really don't take fiscal sustainability into account when doing land use planning. You know, we talk about sustainability, and many comp plans have public facilities elements, which is only one part of the fiscal equation, there's also the operating cost. And so I would hazard a guess that probably less than 10% of the communities in the country actually have a fiscal sustainability component, so the fact that Hillsborough County is considering this is certainly a feather in your cap in terms of the overall sustainability of land use planning within the county. When we talk about fiscal analysis, I think it's important that we distinguish between economic impacts and fiscal impacts, because I, quite frankly, I hear the terms interchanged or used interchangeably across the country, and they're very different. The fiscal analysis is essentially the cash flow to the public sector, we're really looking at what are the revenues generated by new development, and do they offset the commensurate facility and service demands. The elements of the economic equation are quite different, we're talking about the cash flow to the private sector, and those impacts often transcend jurisdictional lines, they have regional impacts in nature, and depending on the project in question, it could have statewide significance as well, and the factors we think about with economic impact are what are the direct and indirect employment, what is the direct and indirect spending, the induced economic activity, the one-time construction phase, and so it's very different. And so when you hear people talk about, you know, spending power, incomes associated with jobs, that's great from an economic perspective, but I think, as you'll see as we go through this presentation, it may or may not have a direct impact on your fiscal flow of revenues, given the revenue structure in that particular state. And this just shows an output from an economic impact study. I think it's also important that we touch on the difference between what it is we do versus your budget and finance people. So, first of all, you know, county and municipal budgeting is largely a revenue-constrained operation, you're looking at past revenue trends to project forward, you're plugging numbers into statewide distribution formulas to estimate your revenue, and then you're basically limiting your expenditures to what you can afford as a jurisdiction. The fiscal impact analysis process is quite different in two ways. One is, it is not a fiscally constrained operation, we are going to look at, what does it cost to maintain current levels of service across the board countywide, and that's a huge leap because most local governments around the country are not doing that. In order to balance the budget, you're increasing levels of service here, but you may be delaying capital infrastructure expenditures for maintenance, or delaying growth-related facilities. And so, that's a big assumption. So we're looking at, you know, once we've estimated the cost, we then see if the revenues are there to be sustainable, and if not, we have to look at ameliorization strategies in order to ensure sustainable growth. So some of the questions, and the reason I'm including this in the presentation is, you know, you may have some expectations about the model, and we want to answer those questions as part of this, and so we want to give you sort of a flavor of how different folks are using fiscal analysis. But a big type of analysis we do around the country is, what is, what's the impact of land use policies and development patterns, specifically about densities and infrastructure costs? Another way we use fiscal analysis quite often is, you know, do we, to what extent do we incentivize certain projects, so what's the return on investment, what are the timing of impacts? One of the questions many of our clients ask across the country is, you know, are we living off tomorrow's growth? Are we in this cycle that we need property tax growth, we need one-time revenues in order to balance the budget? And so it's thinking ahead, long-term, about our revenue structure, and, again, are we living off tomorrow's growth? Another way that we're evolving fiscal analysis now is looking at the impact of demographic and economic changes, and the impact of behavioral trends. You know, for the first time in our lives, over the last 10 to 15 years, we now see millennials and baby boomers wanting to live in the exact same locations in many places around the country. So that's a new phenomenon, it has impacts on spending patterns, consumption patterns, transportation patterns, and that's particularly important as it relates to us modeling transportation impacts, but also in economies where sales tax, where you have a local option, sales tax, those patterns are very important, those trends are very important, and it's important that we consider those in developing the methodology for projecting those types of revenues, because, as we all know, the retail sector has been changing dramatically over the last 10 years, and those changes are expected to continue into the future. I want to touch briefly on methodology, this is not a simplistic model, this is very, very labor-intensive, we're going to utilize what we call the case-study marginal cost approach, because the way we provide services as a county isn't on a per $38 per person and job basis, right? The way we provide fire service is we look at, well, what's the station response area, what are the call volumes, how much call capacity does it have, and how much development is being planned? And so when you have to build that infrastructure, that's what triggers what we call that lumpy operating cost going forward. And so your available capacity, or lack thereof, is what's going to drive the operating costs within the model, and this is just shows you sort of the trend line when you look at marginal costing, it's much more of a jagged curve because of those troughs and valleys occur because of existing infrastructure capacity or lack thereof. And this slide here is just mainly to hammer home a point, the average cost model example is actually from the model that was developed by the state of Florida for Hillsborough County about 15 to 20 years ago, I'm losing track of time. And the top one is from the model we developed for the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission. And you can see just the difference in terms of specificity, the parks budget is shown in red and is simply a per capita value, and the top part of our slide is basically showing one division within the Parks Department, and just the staffing component, and you've got some costs that are fixed, some costs that are variable, and how we determine that is through the interviews with the department heads as we go through the development of the model. Again, another takeaway from this is, again, this is from that Hillsborough County model, from the state and ours, so the marginal cost, we're looking at capacity within the different areas of the county versus saying it's simply so many dollars per school child, right? We can accommodate growth where we have excess capacity, and other areas of the county we can't. Finally, I want to talk about some common misconceptions we see, one is, sort of, there's this blanket idea that we deal with around the country that all residential development is bad, and all non-residential development generates surpluses, and that's simply not true, and so what we want to talk about is the drivers of the fiscal equation, and essentially there's four components here. One is the revenue source, so what are your sources and how are they distributed? What is the characteristics of development, not only physical but socio-economic? What are the levels of service in your community? And then where are you in terms of the community and the growth cycle, okay? And I'm going to show you some examples quickly. So in Arizona, sales tax is king, so the local governments largely don't have a property tax. So, as you can see here, retail development from a fiscal perspective generates substantial surpluses, given that revenue structure in office and industrial don't generate that much fiscal benefit. But if you take those same general uses and locate them in Ohio, we have a completely different revenue structure there. The cities in Ohio, they live off predominantly employment-related income tax, so if you work in Dublin, Ohio, but live in Columbus, Dublin gets your income tax. And so you can see here that you have a completely different relationship fiscally, the retail with the lower service jobs generates deficits where office and industrial are generating substantial surpluses. And this slide here, we love to show, even though this is about 22 years old, from Sarasota County, but we did a study there, and the land uses were defined by specific subdivisions. And so this illustrates how it's dangerous to even say, within one jurisdiction, that certain land uses perform a certain way, because we were able to access, for instance, geocoded data for the school system, there are other factors at play here, the demographics of the community, the assessed values of the community, et cetera. So one single-family subdivision generates surpluses because of its assessed value, it's predominantly empty nester and generated not a single public school student, whereas two of the single-family subdivisions there generate deficits because of the lower assessed values and the demographics associated with that, the younger family and predominantly the schoolchildren. So it's not always a black and white answer when it comes to the fiscal impacts. We've talked about the demographics. Infrastructure capacity, this is huge, there's this general feeling around the country that we see that if you just encourage development downtown where the property taxes are highest per acre, that that's going to solve all your problems. Well, it's not that simple, okay? As many places that we have found that to be true, we have found it to be the opposite, and it has to do largely with where you are in terms of your age as a community. For instance, in Denton, Texas, and Freeport, Louisiana, we did studies recently where the intent was to encourage downtown redevelopment. Well, there's some issues associated with that. One is, the road and utility infrastructure is so deteriorated that it's a significant investment to make that happen, so that has to be factored into the equation. The other thing that has to be factored into the equation is, where's the market in your community, okay? So you may have to intervene in the market and push certain economic levers if you want to have certain things to happen, and that has a cost as well, okay? And so that's what a lot of people don't take into consideration. And it's not uncommon for us to see where, in Kansas, for instance, we did a study where in Lenexa, growth paid for itself, and Lawrence, it didn't, and the reason is because of where they are in terms of their age, Lawrence is growing on the seams, increasing their infrastructure footprint, where Lenexa has more of an inward focus and is approaching build-out and add the infrastructure capacity. So these aren't easy questions, right, and they're very jurisdiction-specific. And finally, I wanted to focus a little bit on the model that we're developing for you all. One of the things we want to consider, and this is, you know, you recognize this as a map of the county, but the county, as you can imagine, is very different. When I grew up, I actually grew up in Tampa, in North Dale Carrollwood area, and the issues that we're facing North Dale Carrollwood 40 years ago when I lived there aren't the issues that you're having in North Dale Carrollwood now, those issues are somewhere else, right? And so, and then you have the cities. And so, the reason I'm showing this map is, within the model, we want to be able to craft the inputs to be reflective of the characteristics of the community, the assessed values, the type of, the style of retail, like, you know, neighborhood retail versus more auto-dependent retail, you know, assessed values, density, all these different things that influence cost and revenues within the model. And this just gives you some background on us, these are just recent fiscal models that we've done. The model design is very opaque and transparent, we develop it in Excel with a visual basic interface, and we can also integrate it with ArcGIS. We've looked at other platforms over the years, but the fact is, if you want to avoid black box concerns, you want to have it in an open environment like Excel, and also, frankly, if you want to use the model robustly, you may want to add components to it over time, and this certainly allows for that. And the important takeaway from this is that it's designed in conjunction with county staff. We are going to collaborate with them on, hey, we think that, given the situation in Hillsborough County, this is the best way to model police, this is the best way to model road improvements or road maintenance, and it's going to be a collaborative effort throughout. Revenue considerations, the point here is that as the retail market has evolved into more of a service-based economy, you're not always generating the amount of sales tax, and so our assumptions have to be defensible. From an operating perspective, we can develop the model in a number of different ways, we can develop by department or program area, we're going to be able to factor in operating expenses that are personnel-related, that don't have to do with facilities as well as those that do, factor one-time costs, and the ability to factor fixed costs, and that's an important consideration, because you're going to have a planning director here, whether there's, you know, 100,000 people or 10,000 people, that's a fixed cost, so we get at what those fixed and variable costs are. And from a capital facility perspective, you know, what's the value of a model if you have to tell it what to build, right? You want to set criteria based on levels of service and different factors, have the model tell you what you need to build. So, to that fact, we can plug in known projects over the first three or four or five years, and then let the model build your CIP past that point, have the ability to recognize unused capacity, build additions versus new bricks and mortar, factor in lag lead time of construction, financing assumptions, all of that. And then finally, there will be several training sessions, the model's quite easy to update, it's color-coded, and as our references will attest, we're always there for maintenance of the model and answering questions and that sort of thing. And with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, that was-
It was a lot.
-that was pretty quick.
A lot in a short time.
I'm like scribbling as fast as I can turn the page here.
Sorry about that.
But well done, I really appreciate the overview. Commissioner White, you're in the queue.
Thank you. So can you give the board just a, I mean, this is probably a pretty complex question, but can you just give us a high-level sampling of some assumptions or parameters that might go into our model that aren't currently in there?
Oh, I mean, from the state's model?
From the, from the model, from the, from the impact fee model, I mean, one of your last slides had said that, you know, as the model's being built and or maintained, that, you know, I guess from a policy perspective, the board could opt, I guess, right, to have parameters in there that we're not currently looking at, or did I, maybe I misunderstood that?
I think I understand the question, but as part of, as part of the development of the model, you know, any, any impact fees that you have are going to be factored in the model. You know, we know about your mobility fee, we know Tindale Oliver well, they do great work, we're going to consult their reports to, because you don't want, you don't want us making up factors that are different than what are being used. So if there are existing plans or documents out there that have assumptions about, let's say, trip length, strip weighting, other factors, road costs, we can factor that into the model, right? What we're going to try not to do is veer from sort of what's commonly agreed upon by staff within the county. Does that answer the question?
I think so. I mean, I'd like to hear further discussion from the board, but that was probably a tough question, because I know that, you know, on the staff side, you know, to your point about trip time, so on and so forth, I mean, I just-
Yeah. So I think, I think, his, their work is not exclusive to the mobility impact, or impact fees at all. So impact fees are one of the revenues. So they're really starting just taking raw data from our budget, by department, by service, and the model that Carson's talking about is essentially taking all of our budget, people, costs, cost centers, and loading the raw data in a certain way into their system so then they can manipulate it and do different analyses. So that part of it is really pretty much plug and play, there's no assumptions, it's kind of what it is. There are other factors then, that Carson talked about in terms of the market, the real estate market, wages, labor, all of those things that go into it, but as they work their way through this, as I said, we'll ask Carson to come back and kind of give you an idea, here's where we are, here's what we've done, and if there are elements to the model that require some input or interpretation or assumptions, then he would ask, you know, you, what do you think? Here's what we think, what do you think, what do county staff think, so that everybody then, as he said, is transparent, everyone then knows going into it what were the assumptions made about various things.
So I think you've answered my question, Mike, so that level of specificity would come at a later time, in a follow-up session?
Yeah, there's just a lot of grunt work, I don't mean it, but it's just a lot of work.
It's early days, it's early days at this point. You know, we'll spend the next few months, you know, gathering that data, meeting with the county official, or county departments, and developing the model, and I envision at some point that we're going to, we're going to be back here showing you real-world examples of how you would do the model, or work the model, right? And I just want to make one point, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about capital costs and savings with densities and that kind of thing, but, you know, we lose track of the fact that the capital budget's usually only 15% to 25% of our total budget, it's the operating cost that really kills us as a community, and when we say that you're going to save 15% on infrastructure, you've got to put that in perspective, we're saving 15% on something that's 15 or 25% of our total operations.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Points appreciated, you know, so much of it, and I don't think, at least, pretty much board members here don't make assumptions about some of the things that you had mentioned that were common misconceptions, I don't think are here. Also, in terms of, I mean, I think, one of the things is, when you don't, I totally get it and have, you know, been looking at it for a long time, operating costs obviously are the big thing, capital costs are, it's easy to build a community center and not to staff it, which we have that in a certain place here. But the, but if you also don't even, aren't even covering the costs of building the community center by your impact fees with new growth, then you're not covering that, plus you're not covering your operating costs, and when you eventually build it, you're doing both. So, I mean, I just want to point that out, but I think, to me, what's really important is that you meet, not just with staff, but for me, as a board member, I would like to be involved in, as you come up with the model, so that when you come back here, that I'm not having to go through it and find what I find are inconsistencies or don't find problems with it. And I know you said you'll use the mobility fee study, but I don't know if you're aware that several of us are having issues with the mobility fee study that's coming up later, even with some of the numbers, raw numbers that were plugged in there and how it was done. So I think it would be, at least for me, and I'm imagining other board members would, like to meet with you in between, and not just when you're ready to do the presentation when the house is built. And then we're in there going, wait a second, the window shouldn't have gone there, and that, we didn't, you know, don't need a door in this room, or whatever, I don't know, whatever.
Sure, right.
So I think it's really important that you, at least for me and several other commissioners, that you're there in the process early.
Perfect.
Great. Commissioner Meriman, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'll make this short, is, do you take into consideration inside the urban service area and outside the urban service area?
Yeah, that really depends on if there are service-level differences, obviously it'll be reflected in, you know, I don't anticipate the model just being a two-service area model. I see it being multi-tiered, but it will recognize whether development is 100% within the urban service area or outside the service area, and to the extent we need to vary trip lengths and other factors, we can certainly do that.
Okay, and is it a formula that you're going to give us, or is it, so that we can apply it? I guess I'm having a hard time with what's going to be delivered to us. I know you're going to give it, you've given us a lot of good information so far, but I guess maybe I should wait and see what you come back with, but is it more of a formula type?
It's more of an interactive model that you can plug in either-
Plug in, okay.
You know, land use scenarios, you know, area-wide or county-wide, or large development projects, and you want to look at, you know, so you get a 10,000-unit, you know, DRI come through the door, and you want to run the developer's, you know, optimistic absorption schedule against alternative schedules that vary absorption, or, you know, we've got a lot of clients that are coming back to us now because of the retail market, and developers are coming back trying to, you know, revise the development agreement for more multifamily or some other land use, and so you can play what-if games to say, you know, what happens if we have a different sales per square foot function, or we assume a different pupil generation rate, what does that do to the school? So it's really, it's going to encourage what we call what-if questions.
Okay, that is really good information, thank you very much. And do you take into account property tax revenue that's accumulated on top of these fees?
Oh yeah, so every cost is going, if all your tax, all your tax-supported funds will be in the model-
Will be in.
-all of your revenues, yes ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
That's great, thank you, good question. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, on slide seven, you explain the fiscal impact analysis is going to forecast the expenses needed to maintain current level of service. I assume that's the adopted level of service, or the current level of service?
Great question. So, and I'm just going to pick on parks and libraries on this, okay? So a lot of times we work with clients that will have a master plan that was prepared, let's say, three or four or five years ago, and the adopted level of service, and it may be a goal level of service, is, let's just say, five acres per thousand. For the fiscal model, we're going to evaluate what your actual level of service is, right? You may be at 4.2, right, or you may be over, who knows? But it will be based on essentially what you have agreed to fund in this fiscal year, and then the next year when you update the budget, it'll be based on what you funded the next fiscal year, compared to whatever the demand base is, whether it's population, employment, trips on the network, you know, water and sewer capacity, whatever it is- employment, trips on the network, you know, water and sewer capacity, whatever it is.
Because we have, uh, very big deficits in, um, our infrastructure, and, um, you know, I think we would like to be catching up some of that as we go, um, will that be part of this?
Well, you, you, you will have the ability to change assumptions within the model, but from a, I mean, from our perspective, I mean, much like with impact fees where, you know, you're not supposed to correct existing deficiencies unless you've got a funding plan.
Right.
You know, some would view if we're, if we're going to evaluate this project with a level of service that we have not agreed to fund as a county, haven't we stacked the deck against that project, because we're not funding that level of service? But you can, within the model, you know, play what-if games, what if we elevated our level of service, it'll estimate what the cost would be.
We had a, a field model some time back, um, uh, that, I think, but mainly talked about impact fees and cost of growth that the planning commission had. I, I wondered if, if you were even referring to that, I thought, in here, no?
Uh, so one of their staff developed that after the FISCHKIND model, yeah.
Okay.
Had a dashboard with it, yeah.
And just one more, um, I was, uh, kind of, um, interested in the parameters as well, like when you are looking at level of services, of course, roads, but also, um, parks, um, schools, fire and res, fire rescue, uh, response times, um, is there a list of those, uh, parameters that you would be, um, looking at, how is, how is a 10,000-house DRI or a, or a, an apartment building going to impact infrastructure across the board, across several different categories like that?
Yeah, it would be all your infrastructure categories, you're correct.
Uh-huh. Level of parks?
Yep, we would estimate that, you know, based on this, you would need to build, you know, 80 acres of parks and half a community center.
Mm-hmm. Bicycle trails, um, our greenways trails, our safe cycling and, and pedestrian infrastructure, does that key into, or that's part of whatever our adopted budget plan is, comes in that end?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, we're, we would factor in, you know, your ELAP funding and conservation, the, the Greenway stuff that you're trying to do right now, uh, but, you know, again, it's not going to be based on an elevated level of service, it's going to be based on, you know, what it, what it is you're providing today.
And it, just one more question, um, so, so what we're getting here is basically economic, like it's not going to, the policy decisions of equity and affordable housing and, and, uh, health, where healthy living, um, where there's a food desert, or we want to encourage, you know, incentivize some grocery store, so, those questions are, are not answered, it's mostly, how much does this cost, it is, is this, um, development going to pay for itself?
Right.
In infrastructure.
You're, you're exactly correct, uh, but to, to your point, we, we were having more and more clients, uh, that, that recognize that, and as I, you know, I, I tried to spend a lot of time on the revenue structure, right? Every, every, every community is going to have contributors and they're going to have recipients, right? So the, the idea is we get our, our land use balance and mix right, so that we know we have a fiscal sustain, fiscally sustainable growth trend, but just because something doesn't pay for itself, doesn't mean that you don't approve it, right? And so we're getting clients that are basically building, uh, matrixes that, that are almost like the cafe standards you see with fuel economy on cars, where, you know, you score it from a fiscal perspective, you score it from an economic impact perspective, because a lot of times industrial space doesn't generate a lot of property tax revenue because it's got low assessed value, but it's, you know, depending on the category, may be producing a hell of a lot of spin-off employment, right? So it's going to score high there, uh, to the extent you want to factor in how it's, you know, factoring, solving affordable housing goals, equity goals, those kind of things, you could rate all of that to, to, we're seeing more and more sensitivity be given to that, because the fiscal model is very black and white, it's just going to provide you data for, for which you can then form policy.
Thank you very much, and definitely on the record, count me as one of the commissioners who wants to be more involved, um, along the way.
Okay, happy to have it.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, just, uh, a couple, great points, um, and I just wondered, um, I read through the Tischler-Weiss report from 2004, which, um, I don't, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I did it.
Yeah, oh, you did it? Okay, because what you, what was recommended in there was the, uh, increased impact fees, which we still have never dealt with to this day, that we're doing right now, and it was a very strong recommendation that we had to do those right away. Um, in fact, we've gone backwards in some cases, um, but anyway, I just, I wanted to make sure that, um, that that was, uh, you know, I thought those recommendations at the time were good, it's too bad that none of them were acted on, but.
The point is not lost on me, believe me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions before we move on to the next item, because we're right about that time. One, thank you very much for this report.
Thank you.
The economist in me is like going, oh, boy, God, I can't wait to this, you know, I'm very excited about the work that you're doing, and I, I, I do appreciate the open, you know, the open model, so that we can really see the impact of different scenarios to determine how it matches up with.
Right.
The policies we'd like to adopt as far as our comprehensive plan and our transportation plan. We have a car-centric, uh, existing situation. And, and so making that conversion or addressing that is going to impact, uh, a, a lot of people, developers and how they lay out plots, um, we have to live within, I assume, which is what I've had a real tribal understanding, but we have to live within those different parameters of assumptions. So for example, on your slide, uh, nine, where you have a good example of numbers that I frequently are completely challenged by, given the realities of changing demographics, an example of the counts or the averages for urban versus suburban, for housing vehicles per unit, when you have a car-centric community, the vehicles available per housing unit is significantly different than if you have a, uh, walkable community where there's mixed retail and schools and libraries and parks inside of a community or within walking distance. So I always get challenged by these assumptions, but I, you made mention, actually, when you were talking about this particular page, about demographics and how we have, how we adjust our revenue streams, or how our revenue streams are adjusted based on demographic factors. Are you able to include that in your model?
Yeah, yeah, and to your point, I mean, the graphic you see on, on slide nine is actually from a specific jurisdiction, it's from Washoe County, Nevada, uh, so you're going to see these kind of variations within Hillsborough County, and we can do, we're going to do this for each one of the, the, you know, the sub-areas or input areas that we have as part of the model, because I would think that, I mean, I can't confirm this, but my, my gut tells me that there's probably, in certain areas of the city of Tampa proper, car ownership is very different than it would be in other parts of the unincorporated county, and so the model will be able to take those into account, right?
Yes, and that's, that was what I was trying to make sure.
Yep.
I was saying, how do we see where the significant differences are, and then how we use that information to encourage growth in an area that we feel we can afford to service? So to Commissioner Smith's point, we have areas in the urban area where we aren't providing services, for example, septic tanks and wells inside the urban core that are not connected to our service, so while I wouldn't want to develop a plan that says we are modeling for our current level of service, uh, when it's at a deficit that we need to address looking forward, but to your point, these impact fees pays for future stuff, and then we have to figure out how to pay for past stuff. So how, where the revenue stream and what the makeup of that, that does two things, encourage growth where we need it and we can afford to provide it. Or down the road, what the economic impact actually works, where that, that investment in the future creates more jobs, it creates more opportunities, so those are, it's nice to know that that's part of your analysis. The last question I had, has more to do with the work we've been doing in these workshops. They, you made mention on slide eight that, you know, land use policies versus development patterns, um, we've got, you know, a six or seven-page from the last, actually, it's even longer than, a five-page, uh, workshop summary of the work that we've been doing so far, which has actually been great work, we've been pretty much inconsistent, consistent with what our goals look like in terms of how we grow and how we, how we pay for things. And the, some of those conversations need to be factored into this situations, because it addresses not only what we want, how we want to grow, and how we pay for it, but how do we catch up? And that's, that catch-up has to be done with other revenues other than an impact fee, is that correct? Okay, so let me ask you this, I've been trying to figure out with, between these two reports, how we pay for the massive transit system that we have in Hillsborough County that called the school buses, and mitigate the policy of two miles walking in a car-centric designed community, and how we encourage what we're looking for. So I, I don't expect you to answer that question now, but I, those are the things that I'm trying to wrestle with, because if we don't charge impact fees to schools, but developers are building communities that aren't walkable, or we're not taking into account in our trip counts, the fact that no parent is letting their kid walk two miles, and probably not very many kids actually want to walk two miles, but, but no parent's going to actually do that, so those are car trips, oftentimes in possibly the wrong direction from where their job center is. So our trip counts based on our design may be different than the national standards. Do we have the ability to model that?
We do.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yep.
That's great, well, I look forward to lots of conversations, I like.
Well, I say that with one caveat, you can model anything, it's very difficult to model everything.
I get that.
And to do it in a user-friendly, easy environment, right?
Right, right, but I think there is, it is important to, to, uh, encourage opportunity to address our current scenario and where we're going, and how we develop a fee structure that makes sense, uh, going, you know, as capacity is added to an area, and the cumulative impact of that capacity, because that's what, unfortunately, in your district and Mr. Weiss's district, we've continually added housing without necessarily adding capacity to help people get around along the way, and that's causing some, some real constraints to the quality of life of the people in that area that are included in our workshops, so those, I'd like to really, really discover how that works. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, look forward to working with you.
Okay, next item is the fee analysis approach, and you're going to have to help me with your name, sir, I want to make sure I don't, Martin Nikas?
Martin Nikas.
Nikas, very nice to meet you, sir.
I would keep pressing this one? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, my name is Martin Nikas, I work at the Florida State University at the Center for Economic Forecasting and Analysis, which specializes in applied economics, so it is not science-driven, it's pure applied economics, which ties in a little bit, uh, at my background, I studied economics at the State University in Groningen, which is a city in the Netherlands, and it doesn't pick sides on economic schools or thoughts, it is pure data-driven, based on which they determine what, what the outcome should be. This is not my.
You're going to have to help him, it's not his presentation.
Oh, yeah.
There, there it is. Thank you.
You may want to raise the podium for him and get closer to the microphone as well, there you go, okay.
Am I dead?
Thank you.
We were contacted by Prague to subcontract on the economic impacts of impact fees, I didn't think of the term itself, but, uh, I rather use economic consequence to distinguish from the impact fees. We see a couple of slides, I will just flip through them, um, to show where the, the center is situated, what centers we have, um, this is a short slide on, uh, our specific Center for Economic Forecasting Analysis, and I want to get to this one first. We see that, um, in our conversations with Prague and Hillsborough County, we talked about five different types of impact fees, I will not go through them separately, but it does raise an a priori issue, and the issue is, if we look at economics, we of course try to follow the paper trail, uh, but we also try to look beyond it, which often is not a paper trail in the sense that we can follow it. For instance, if I have a dollar that I have to pay based on an impact fee, the county is able to say, okay, 30 cents is for this, for this type of fee, 15 cents is for this, and in fact, you have an obligation to earmark it, so in that sense, we know exactly what cons were, and what the consequence of spending that money by the county will be. But the flip side is, economics also always has flip sides, a private person pays it, and then something happens that we often cannot follow, what is the trade-off for the private citizen? Does he buy a hamburger less, or maybe a present less, or, uh, so we have to make estimates on that side of the, the coin. What we did so far, because we didn't receive any detailed information on the county yet, which for calculation purposes on impact fee is a requirement, so I requested, uh, similar data on the low-level, uh, abstraction for the Hillsborough County, um, just for the purpose of, it needs to be precise modeled to the county, and secondly, um, we need to have, let's say, that, that granular level to do estimates and projections on, uh, the, we have to do it right, so to speak. So far, we were able to look into literature to get a gist, to get an idea on, uh, what is happening elsewhere, what results were generated. Next, we set up a preliminary methodology, which I will address in a moment, but that methodology is, let's say, still rather in flux, we can add and change as we come along, and usually digging into data, it takes on creativity to see where causalities lie, where results can be generated. The summary of the literature, this is, I think, the most interesting slide of the presentation, I will take some time to go over it. Usually economists perceive things from different perspectives, you have a specific school on demand, you have a specific school in economic thought on supply, and you can also say, okay, if I combine them, we have a total picture, a more integral picture, so I will go through the different sides of the economy based on the phenomenon of impact fees. First, I will, um, look into the demand side, and again, it is all literature, we didn't take any sides or positions, it's pure literature, we will have to find in the data what we find. The first thing is that if a dollar is raised on impact fees, literature shows that prices of housing probably will go up with $1.60, $1. prices of housing probably will go up with $1.60, $1.80 in that range. That is the consensus in literature. Basically, that means that the private person will face not a dollar tap, but a dollar sixty tap, at least. What is the cause of that so-called overshift? It is not entirely clear, so I will have to come back on that one. But it somehow has to do with the second point, which is the willingness to pay. Because if you are confronted with the situation, you need a new roof, so to speak. And you are entering the real estate market to find, to find real estate. Before impact fees, for instance, you would eye a real estate object of, let's say, $200, $250,000. If however, you are confronted with impact fee, just for the sake of argument, $50,000, you basically see either a house of $300,000 or if you are not able or willing to pay that, you were willing to pay $250, you basically buy a house of $200 and not $250. So there will be a shift in the market. The market will adjust itself. The fact is that the fact is yes, that, that there will be a consequence in raising impact fees. Not so much according to some economists on the supply side. I will come back to that in a minute. But again, there will be a shift. So what we are analyzing is, let's say, the result and not the, the gross price on housing. So there, there will need to be a little bit nuanced in this respect. Then, does an impact fee impact houses across the board? Usually, the idea is, well, if there is an impact fee, the people will have to pay for it. But we, what we see in the market is that in the inner suburban areas, there will be a rise in pricing on small and medium houses. And in the outer suburban areas, we see a price rise in the medium and larger homes. So there is a shift going over, let's say, the ranges of the new development. Adding to that, and that is a little bit of concern, and some economists try to, to push it under the carpet, so to speak, the fourth point, whether or not impact fees do have an impact on land pricing, on undeveloped land. Most of them say no, but there are respectable reports that say, yes, there is. Even to a complete dollar, dollar for dollar, dollar. So if I combine point one A and one D, the impact fee of $1 revenue for the county is pushing up prices by $1.50, $1.60 and lowering prices on the land input by a dollar, so leaving almost $2.50 somewhere in the balance that is picked up by either the developer or the constructor. So it, it all depends on where elasticities in a market lie. Again, some say there is little, others say there is more. We will have to find out what the parameters are for Hillsborough County. And again, it is not, let's say, a judgment call at this point. It is uncertainties in the market. People react, people, and that is something different from the previous speaker. We can follow the book only so far. But beyond that, we try to imagine, we try to estimate what is going on, both on the, the private citizen who is paying and who is trading off with other expenses. But we also try to look at, at the, the receiving end, the county and the builders. Secondly, the supply side. Most of the literature that I have seen is rather ambivalent about the nature of the relation between impact fees and the, the construction. Does it go up? Does it go down? If we look, point two B, if we look at the, let me, the suburbanization supply based on impact fees tend to go up. And the same for larger homes in the suburbs. On the other hand, if I bring the specific nature of the fee in the balance, we don't see that same effect if we increase water and wastewater fees. But we see, do see that with mobility, with school and fire fee. So there is an interaction that is not quite clear as of yet, based on the literature that we did research. Then the third point, if we bring demand and supply together, the question is what does it overall? Because there's always an interaction between supply and demand, but what is the bottom line? It would be easy to say there's no resolve yet. Literature and science is not far enough yet to, to figure out what, what will happen on the total. By the way, employment is usually used as a metrics for, for development because employment covers different types of, sorry, development. But what is happening in balance? Given my experience, I would say there is sort of a U shape in, in outcome, in results from impact fees. Preliminary, there will be an expectation. Preliminary, there will be construction, there will be development, there will be expenditures. But once buildings are built and stuff is done as proposed and planned, the expectation element falls out. We will see a flat development in employment, other economic development. Over time, the market will adjust and pick up on the new setting and will again come to thrive. So there is sometimes a long adjustment process and it is not uncommon to see adjustment process, processes take as long as 10 years, a decennial. Then, not on the slide, there is a fourth issue that I would like to raise. And that is, at least two studies looked into the impact that impact fees or consequences that impact fees have on the nature and the structure of the economy based on industries, based on sectors. And the conclusion there is that overall, the number of businesses, regardless whether or not it is the, the hard sector under which I would take manufacturing, trade, and the soft sector on the other side, mainly services in, whether it is financial, education, medical, whatever. All businesses in count will drop. There is a different outcome on employment. We see that the businesses that remain grow in size. Not with the hard sector, a dropout, but especially growing in the service sector. So we see more medical, we see more government, we see more financial, education, et cetera, services rise. And that was by itself an interesting observation. Again, at this juncture, I lack the, the theoretical background to explain why that happened, but I will come back on that later. I will turn to some preliminary statistics, descriptive statistics. First of all, demographics. The only thing I would like to point out, average growth annually, two and a quarter percent. On personal income and per capita income, we see respectively eight percent and five and three thirds, two-thirds of a percentage. And basically the difference between the eight and the five two-thirds is the two and a quarter that I showed on the first page, the number of people. But basically that per capita income is not, let's say, since we need that number in our analysis, it, it, it is not, let's say, enough to cover. Let me go to this, this slide. Total housing units, they grow with 1.2%. So if we have the two and a quarter percent of population growth, the growth in home units is not enough to cover it. So it is expected that you have some tension on the real estate market itself. This is the slide I alluded to earlier in terms of the adjustment in the market on industries. We see four sectors, which I noted out below the table. The first one being professional, scientific and technical services. The second one, government. The, the third one, finance and insurance. And then the fourth one, health. Presently, both are, all four are the top four. And together, they constitute 50% of the economic activity here in Hillsborough County. This might be a result of the earlier impact fees. I don't know. We will figure that one out. But the picture is, is, let's say, speaking to me and I'll come back on that one. Some further, just descriptive statistics. We see, for instance, the total housing units in brackets of value. Interesting is the development from 2010 to 13. We see basically a drop in the peaks of distribution. Drop to the, the category 50 to 100,000 and then suddenly changing in 2014 to the level of 200,000 to 300,000. I would say the real estate market did, did recover. The same, you can see on the median values in the bottom figure. Clear tipping point in 2013. We see the monthly cost of owners, including some selected monthly owner costs, which usually are recurrent expenditures. Next to a mortgage, you will have a utility bill to pay, insurance on your house, et cetera, et cetera. The, the thing that caught my eye was the, the lower figure. I put the monthly cost of an owner on, including the mortgage on the left-hand side and excluding the mortgage on the right-hand side. And you see almost an exact difference of about $1,000, which constitutes the mortgage. Given the house pricing, given the interest rate, I figured that the, the term for mortgages would be around 30 years. And that was confirmed by a subset of data on Hillsborough County. At the top chart, or the, the, the top table here, you see the term to maturity at almost 30 years. Effective rates ranging from four and a half to four and a quarter, almost 5%. We see the loan amounts in the 250 range. Basically, I would say, given the last three columns, it would be top mortgages that people sign for in order to buy homes. The bottom figure is basically to see where the, the private owner budget is. And we see that basically the fixed cost of living a home will be less than 20% of their respective incomes. So far, some of the general data, and again, my apologies for not having dug further because of the lack of data, we can't dig further. But again, we will do our utmost in terms of creativity to dig as far as possible. The methodology, since it's is an overall, I would say, macro impact analysis, will focus on a series of variables, which economists usually put in equations. This particular example is based on a paper from Keith Elanfeldt, a professor at FSU. I contacted him. But basically, we usually say, we need to explain in the middle of the PIT. P is price, I is location, T is time. And we take a couple of variables and we say, okay, this price is the result of an X amount of variables that we put in. And we try to make, let's say, a model based on those inputs. I will go over it quickly. The second formula is starting with DT, that is demand. You see a variable U, which is owner cost. If cost goes up, demand goes down. So there's typically a negative relation. For instance, the price of housing. If the price of housing goes up, demand goes down. Logical economic conclusion. Third one, the rent. If the price of renting goes up, I'm not going to pay rent. I buy. So demand goes up. Same with my income. Since income doesn't change a priori, we touched on it earlier. First thing I do if I want to, if I enter the, the real estate market is I walk to the bank and I ask, what am I good for in mortgage terms, given my income? They will give you a quote. And that is the, the start of looking for a home. So if my income goes up, yes, I will ask more. In the U, in the previous, we typically see a mortgage rate, we typically see an income tax rate, and we typically see an expectation of the potential buyer on house pricing, where it will go in order to have some profit after the sales. Once we have demand, we will couple it with supply, the S in the middle of the sheet, basically stating this is the market equilibrium. And then we will go back and try to figure out at what price did the market come to terms, demand and supply side. And that will be something along this line. Again, it's in flux. I can change it in all ways. I can change it to subregions. I can change it to the type of houses being asked for, being built. It all depends on the quality of the input, because you can have a nice model, but if the input is not sufficient, you cannot calculate what, what you might need to. And I am missing one. And I am missing one. There's a sheet missing, but that was basically the conclusion or the summary of the present We have impact fees based on the assumption that there is a market externality. Something went wrong in the past, and to cover that wrong, we put in an impact fees. Impact fees, however, based on the literature that I showed you, will have a lethargy of new impacts, the spinoff, the ripple effects through the markets. And both sides, demand and supply are impacted. How it peters out for Hillsborough County, I don't know yet. I haven't seen data. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr., you're recognized.
Thank you. Can we look at the summary of literature? Do we have citations for any of that literature that was summarized?
We will present a report. You will have the literature list.
So this is a preliminary...
Yeah, this is very preliminary.
...understanding of what you're going to do. And then you're going to bring back...
Yes, I will, or we will.
And so when this comes back to, what you're going to deliver then is some...
The economic impact...
Findings.
...or economic consequence of the impact fees.
Okay. And I was kind of surprised, well, very surprised. It's counterintuitive to me to have this conclusion that impact fees lead to higher housing prices, because anybody who's bought or sold a house knows you set that price of the house, not by how much restor, how much you've spent on a pool, or a roof, or anything. You can only set the price of your house at what the market will bear. And in fact, I was recently in a panel discussion with a former president of the Greater Tampa Area Realtors, who was saying the same thing, but with a lot more credibility than I get when I say it. But that is, that the price is set not on how much lumber the builder put in, and how much the shingles cost, and how much the impact fees cost, but on what the market will bear. And you can also kind of, it also seems counterintuitive to me, because I can't imagine if we lower impact fees $1,000, that a developer is going to take $1,000 off the cost of the house.
You're entirely correct. There is a difference between cost calculation and economics. And cost calculation, as you point out, would indicate a house to be this or that price, but the price doesn't matter if it is sold in a market, because there you have a different metrics, supply and demand. That having said, however, if impact fees are raised, somebody is paying the bill. And that somebody, whether it is the developer, the constructor, they want to see it back. So they will pass the buck to either the buyer or the landowner, something of that order. But I also said that there will be a shift in the market. If you raise impact fees, a house that you might have bought before a $10,000 impact fee might have been 10,000 less. So if you cannot buy it because the bank doesn't allow you to borrow an additional 10,000, you go a notch lower. So there is a shift in the market, and it might be that some economists in their research come to the conclusion, okay, given that there is a full shift, I don't see it reflected in the prices. But that doesn't mean that there is not an economic impact. There is, there is that shift.
So we, you went back to what we're saying, even though you said I was right about what I was saying. But one more, one more point is if there's a cost to, on the infrastructure, if there's a capital cost of the roads and the schools and the fire and rescue for each house, somebody's got to pay it.
Somebody has to pay it.
So if the, whether the developer pays it, or the next, the new homeowner pays it, or if it's not, if it's not either one of them, then the taxpayers pay it. So there's that flip side that you mentioned about economics.
The buck is passed on. The question is, who pays it?
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, I mean, it does seem obvious that the, it would be shifted onto the taxpayers, but I think there is another option that happens, in that we just have a horrid lack of infrastructure. What I found out with the school impact fees is when the school impact fees aren't collected, because they're not enough, then we don't have enough to build the next high school, the next middle school, the next elementary school. So what happens is, they say, we can't build it this year, we have to build it next year or the year after that. If we increase our school impact fees to be what the studies show that they should be, then we can move up and build out as we should. Now, I bring this up for one, because I talked to someone from a major corporation just this morning, who said, we can't get people to move here. They do not want to move to this area because they feel as though the schools aren't supported. And I've heard about how wonderful the schools are in Orange County and Osceola and Pinellas, where they don't really even have any impact fees, because they don't have any growth. So they're investing in their schools just with their regular tax base, they can do it. And, you know, so I see that we're having tremendous losses because we're not doing infrastructure in road building. We have design exceptions, so we go on forever and ever without proper roads, sidewalks, the infrastructure lack, and that ultimately affects. So I don't know how that is put into the calculation, but here's another point, is that out of the 25 largest metro areas in the nation, we have the 25th, we're 25th in median wages. And we, I think, suffer from that and attracting certain jobs to the area or certain people living here. And just to, I know I'm too in kind of like the bigger picture, but I have this, here's some other questions. Collier County, Osceola County have among the highest impact fees. I know you said 50,000. They have among the...
I...
Right. But it's 30,000. I know you qualified that, but they have about 30,000 in their, what's their urban areas, or equal to our urban service area in total, with all the things they charge for. And both of them have some of the fastest growth rates in the country, in the country and in Florida. And so they're attracting with their impact fees what, I'm not sure, but I'm wondering about a comparison, because they are supporting their infrastructure with their impact fees and having tremendous growth and having stellar communities as well. And I just wonder, too, in our area, Pasco, Manatee, and Polk, the three surrounding counties around us, are all finding that they have to or do charge far higher impact fees than we do. And they are all, you know, they're surrounding us. So people, so developers, I've heard before, well, we're going here or there, but they're already charging higher impact fees in those communities. So I'm just wondering how any of that impacts what you're telling us, if you're, because it seems to be not things that your model or what you're considering takes into account.
Well, what I showed in, let's say, the one or two formulas is not an entire model yet, so we have to figure that one out. But from the get-go, first of all, we don't live in the other county, we have different metrics in Hillsborough. Secondly, yes, people will opt out regardless. In terms of, yeah, if somebody drops out, there will be less demand impacting the price. So it is all balancing out. What I would like to go back to, it is, to my perception, not even the level that is important, for the very simple reason that basically, if it is right, if it is according to the law in Florida, an impact fee is only a financing instrument, right? So what is being done is we take money because we have a time preference in order to do things, and we compensate that with future real estate tax credits or rebates. That is how it is supposed to work. I'm not saying that it does here in Hillsborough County, but basically, the county therefore is taking money based on time preference to do things. How it works out in Hillsborough County, again, I don't know yet. I haven't seen the data yet in order to make that determination. Even going one step further, if allowed. There used to be a lot of infrastructure building done in Hillsborough County that was financed by the federal government, right? That money dissipated. So at a certain point in time, the people of Hillsborough County were facing the fact that federal money was drying up and still had to build their roads. That is where the impact fee came from. That is the origin. You could say from a bigger picture, from, because if you look at that timeframe, you basically see certainly the reactions on impact fee. People protest, they don't want to pay for new development, so new development has to pay for itself, kind of a discussion. And basically, you have the average cost and the marginal cost argument, because new development is added to the community and comes with a different cost level. If you ask me whether or not that is the correct analysis, I would say no, for the very simple reason that usually if you add capacity to a market, which was the situation before, you basically have a continuous dropping average cost curve. Even stronger, if you add more and more over time, you see a long-term cost curve, not an average, a short, but a long-term average cost curve. Basically, the picture then becomes, did the people before pay enough? Because they were basically renting on government financing. So if I change the short-term picture between average cost and marginal cost to a long-term average cost, marginal cost, we made an error, and we have to accept that. So we have to deal with the fact that now we are facing the impact fees and probably rising impact fees, but all have a consequence. That is my point in terms of...
Right, but I would say it's not just a fiscal consequence, it's a consequence of having a misery index, basically, you know, where people don't have the infrastructure that should be just there and makes for not building good communities outside. And then you talked about the timeframe, which I talked about with the schools, but the reality of that timeframe in a lot of ways is never. It doesn't happen. And, you know, I just, I, you know, that, it doesn't get built and it doesn't get done. And it's not only, it's also shifting into rates that people are paying, as in wastewater and water, because the impact fees haven't been done, so we're looking at raising rates. And, you know, as you mentioned, tax base, I know that I was reading about Sumter County with the villages, where they apparently for years have way undercharged, and their totally very conservative county commission just raised their taxes by 25 percent, and they had no choice but to do it, because they had so undercharged in impact fees and they were, had a crisis.
That is the position basically that we are facing.
Thank you, thank you very much. Commissioner Hagan, you have a question? And we're running about 15 minutes late, so...
Yeah, this is going to be real quick.
Okay, quick.
I'm so sorry. Commissioner White and I were joking, it seems like we're back in getting my MBA again during an economics class.
Perfect.
But I want to say to me, though, that the most relevant point that you made was that there are consequences to impact fee increases.
Yes, absolutely.
And I just want to point out that we do not live in a static environment, and all too often, I think, there are folks out there that think that, you know, if you need additional revenue, just raise this fee, raise this tax rate, and that's going to automatically equate to plug and play, that's going to be automatically equate to another, to this figure. Well, that's not necessarily the case, because people have choices, and we do not live in a static environment. To me, it's only common sense that impact fee increases will lead to higher housing prices. And if anyone thinks that these fees, fee increases are not going to be pass-throughs, I think you're living in fantasy land. I really do. And I agree that we need additional revenue. There's clearly affordable housing is a priority for this board, and I just want to caution this board that I'm deeply concerned that if we go down the path of implementing the impact fee increases that have been considered, that that's going to significantly impact our ability, or eliminate or drastically reduce affordable housing and workforce housing in our community, unless that we somehow offer some type of incentive or other way, other means to offset those fee increases. So I'm just going to put it out there, and I have significant concerns about that, and we'll just see how it plays out. But I appreciate your presentation very much.
The concern is there that we are talking about other people's money.
Right, right. I just have a real quick question, and then we'll find out from you. The one question I had is really, what economic factor adjustments can you use or do you use to address current and past interest rates, job growth in our factor, wages at the level of affordability, and then momentum? Because as you suggested in your analysis, or at least your preliminary analysis, that there's a certain amount of elasticity in the price values and the actual consequence of the impact fee and where it...
Correct.
...it has that multiplier effect. So when we're looking at policies on how we set the rates for certain price points, or not necessarily in terms of the market for what it's sold, but for the, where the ultimate cost of building that, so that there's a margin between, as you mentioned, you spend a dollar and you add 60 cents on top in order to get to the market price, that price point is important if we're looking at how we address the needs of the people who live here, given their wages. Because something I've said in the past is, we've been building houses for people who don't live here now, that are coming here, instead of the people that work here, given our economy.
Very fellow point, yeah.
And so I'm concerned about making sure that we address that factor. So you can consider that question in your analysis, but then you've mentioned on several occasions that you need data.
Yeah.
Where are those data sources and where do you need to get them?
The bottom line issue is that we gathered all public available data, but to get to the granular level of category housing or separating out geographic areas, we need, let's say, the data on that level or on that category, because it is not in the public because it is not in the public data.
It's not in public data. So do, I mean, are you talking about government data? Do we provide the doctor with information?
We do have commissioners, a list of the data that has been requested. It is a robust list. We are hopeful that some of it might be able to cross with the work that Carson Bice is going to do so that we can get two for one. But we do have that list and we are compiling and also scoping kind of how we get that all completed.
Okay, great, thank you. And we do have, there are resources in the county. You know, we have a builders association and other resources for being able to get you the sort of the market data that you may be looking for. If we don't have that in our own coffers. But I look forward to get your report. Those were the primary concerns I had was, you know, house price and the marginal difference and where that elasticity really lies.
The $1 million question.
And how that correlates to our rural and urban costs. And that will play a big part.
We will try to figure that out.
I want to make sure business owners can be, you know, that are helping us provide the housing we need can make their lives work too. But I also recognize it's critically important that we consider how important it is to build houses for the people who live here and work here. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Commissioner Meriman, you're recognized.
Thank you, I just have a couple of questions. So I'm going to piggyback on Commissioner Hagan's comments about the consequences, because there will be consequences.
There will be consequences.
And I guess we'll clearly know what those are as we move forward. But somewhere in your formula, you tell us like the, kind of the break-even point or the threshold that we should go to when we're applying these increases?
The analysis that we basically do is, okay, imagine we have a level of 4,000, what will be the consequence? If we raise that with another 1,000, what will be the consequence? So we will have a straight relation between that. But it is not that, it is probably not unless the data dictates us otherwise that we can split out this fee against that fee.
Okay.
That is probably an issue.
I guess going back to some transparency situations, do you think that when we apply these increases, should we be completely transparent with the home buyer, with the developer about what they're going to get for these increases that they're going to pay?
I think so. I think that is a politician's obligation to do so.
I've not quite done that. You know, because, I mean, I'll tell you, out in rural and suburban, a lot of the road improvements that need to be made are state roads. We have no control over the state roads. And different things. So, okay, great. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. Okay, on to mobility fees, technical analysis review.
Commissioners, before Neil Goon begins, I'd like to just kind of go over a couple of things. As Mike said, if you'd like, I've jotted down two things. What we've heard that has been important to you and really a timeline of what has happened to the mobility fee since 2016. So that is available for you. But what we've heard is there have been a couple of issues that at least we've been able to document. One of the things is what has happened with mobility fees increases, studies, et cetera, since the fees were adopted in 2016. And I'll speak to that in a moment. But the other questions that came up yesterday and in some of the conversations dealt with the fee variance really between 2016 and the 2019 study. And Neil Goon is here to speak to that. One of them will deal with trip generation. We know construction cost has been a question for some of you. And of course, we know the SRTAX has been an issue for a number of you as well. Then the other piece has been what do we do with housing affordability? I think the question came up if multifamily fees are going to go up and we want to incentivize multifamily, what can we do? And there are some policy opportunities there. The other that we've heard is our fees compared to Pasco County fees, how is that different? And why are Pasco County fees able to be so much higher? Then the other one was dealing with incentivizing development, which again will probably be a policy discussion that comes out of some of the work that will be done by Carson Bice and his organization. And the last piece that we know of is the RP2. So Neil Goon is prepared to speak to those items, as are we, and some of the policy ones. But I wanted just to start by saying, the fees that were looked at were adopted in April of 2016. They were not effective until January of 2017 and they were adopted at 40%. Each January from that point forward, they increased from 40 to 50 to 70 to 80. So this past January, they were, the fee that was effective was 80% of the calculated cost in the 2016 study. In 2017, in September of 2017, an organization called ITE, the Institute of Traffic or Transportation Engineers, made major modifications to its database. And in the old days, that document used to be about this big and it contains national data on trip generation rates, which is a key component of the formula for all kinds of uses. Many of those then are listed in the table that you have before you. One of the things that happened is based on those studies, some fees went up, some fees went down, some trip generation rates went up, some went down, and some categories were collapsed. The study that Tyndale Oliver has done reflects those changes in the ITE manual. In March of 2018, Tyndale Oliver began its study. And then in November of 2018, the SRTAX was passed. So there were questions about how does that get included? Does it get included? What are the requirements to include it? In May of 2019, this board held a workshop on mobility fees. We talked not specifically to a study, but introduced the concept of mobility fees. And at that point, we were discussing the credit buyback as well. But then in December of 2019, on the 19th of December, there was a board workshop where the draft study was presented. And we have that workshop material for you in the event that you wanted to have that if Neil Goon were to reference certain slides from that. So those were the key elements. And then we are here before you today with some of those questions that we know are of concern to you and that you have raised, and then any others. And to deal, to address those, Neil Goon Kemp from Tyndale Oliver will make the presentation and address your questions and any others that you may have.
Good afternoon, Neil Goon Kemp with Tyndale Oliver.
Good afternoon.
Instead of going through the same presentation, if you like, we can address each component, like the cost and credit and demand. Or if you like, I can go through the presentation, what would be?
I think we'd rather see your structure so far and then we'll entertain questions. We're starting at a point where we'll end your presentation at 4:00.
Okay.
So any way that you can address what you've heard so far within the structure of your presentation would be of value, I'm sure.
Yes. So we had the timeline that Lucia went over, so I will skip through that. Are you able to see the presentation or no?
Oh, we can't see, yeah.
Okay, so you, okay, here it is. So this is, again, the basic impact fee formula. Looks at cost of the capacity. From that, we subtract any contributions from new development or the same infrastructure and under demand. So some of the changes that affected the study significantly is on the demand side, ITE 10th edition came out in 2017. And what basically it did is it eliminated all the studies prior to 1980s, added more studies, and it's, we started seeing substantial changes in the generation rates. It used to be when they did their updates, because of the sample size and so on, we wouldn't see that much of an increase. But they really made a big effort to clean up the data so that it's more reflective of the current conditions. So we had like 24 land uses that had an increase and 33 land uses decreased and then some no change. They also reorganized several categories, including the multifamily. And that's one of the reasons what you are seeing in the change. Multifamily used to have six different categories. It was like a townhouse or separate condos, separate and so on. So they combined all that and then tiered it by level. And based on their analysis, that's a better reflection of the trip generation by that land use. So when we compare it to one of those six, it's somewhat misleading because they range anywhere from $1,000 to $5,000, you know, depending on which category it was. But when we compare it to midpoint, it looks like you are seeing a big increase in one tier, about even in the other one and a decrease in the other one. So it's, part of it is that reorganization. And the changes were kind of pretty substantial. Like someone went down to 30%, 40%. So it's not like a couple percentages. So that's why it's affecting the results. Costs, again, they've been increasing. So we looked at improvements in Hillsborough County as well as statewide bids. We went through a seven-year period. And then I know there were some concerns. We took out some outliers, like we had a 17 million per lane mile unusual project that's a flyover. And that's not, what cost is supposed to represent is what the county is likely to build on average going forward. You know, trying to estimate next 30 years, on average, what type of projects this county builds. And then you're going to have some unusual ones that's going to skew it. So that project itself affected the overall cost pretty minor. Like it went from 3.6 million to 3.3 million, you know, because it was a very short segment. When we compared it to other jurisdictions, you were above them. So we picked a number that is above them. Like, so they were averaging about 2.8 million. And we, and you were more about 3.3 with the more standard projects. And that's where we went to, you know, almost 15%, 20% higher than statewide average. State projects were the same type of analysis was done and about 3.7 was used. So overall, when we combined it, it's about 5.5 million per lane mile. So it's not, you know, if you have two lanes, it's about 11 million to build one mile. In terms of the credit, again, impact fee is charged against the structure. So the structure, over the 30 years, different people will live, that structure is going, impact fee stays with land, stays with that structure. And that structure will pay different taxes, just like anybody else. So the portion of that structure's contributions is subtracted in terms of credit. So the credit is not what everybody is paying, it's just what that one house is paying. So if you are growing 1.5%, 2%, it's really, you know, just that percentage's contributions, not existing populations. So it's limited to that contributions. And again, we talked about fuel taxes not being very useful. But then the sales tax is a very, was added. And then there was some limited ad valorem tax added for the next five years prior to sales tax passing. And then a little bit of fuel tax. So of those, the SRTAX is of course the largest portion of the credit. And basically, there are a lot of unknowns about it as far as how it's going to be spent. So what we did is looked at all the buckets and we looked at the county's one-year plan. And we look at the project descriptions, anything that could be capacity. We isolated those. So for example, in the maintenance bucket, everything was resurfacing. So we didn't give any credit for that. That's just extends life but does not add capacity. But for example, congestion management, transportation safety. So they had some, you know, bike lane additions, intersection improvements. Those are all capacity adding projects. So when in that, because we don't yet have a full 30-year program, we just based it on what's available. And if anything, we wanted to be conservative to make sure that the fee is defensible. So when in doubt, we gave, you know, we recognized it as a credit, as expansion. Now, when the program gets more refined, that can be easily addressed and readjusted. So that's the increase in credit. So that's one of the reasons you are seeing a decrease from 100% last time to 100% this time. And then this is kind of giving some comparisons to, this was, at the time, you were at 70%. This is a December presentation and it moved to 80% in January. And then this is also showing Pasco County's current adopted numbers. And so in our mind, it's pretty comparable, 5,300 to 8,500 is your range. And they are 5,800 to 9,800. This is some of the other counties, Manti counties, ranging from 4,000 to 6,900 for a mid-sized, single-family home. Herando Citrus is pretty low. So that was the most of the technical side. RP2 itself was, at the time, when we did the study, we had the urban and rural fee districts. And we had a question about the RP2, which was right at the border and had some mixed characteristics. So from a technical side, we look at what, if it would affect the study conclusions, and it is so small of a travel that compared to the, you know, entire county or either region, it doesn't make any difference. So then, from a technical perspective, so it became more of a policy decision. And at the time, the board decided to consider it more of an urban fee rate. And then I think now it's moving back to rural rates. So again, it's a policy decision. And then we had a couple other items that were discussed and but I don't think those are your questions right now. So with that, I think I'll, these are just the adjustments. And then we are differentiating the fee, urban, rural, rural fee being higher, as you saw. And that's based on the actual achieved level of service in the districts. So that's, again, we went through that, you know, people are able to travel more, you know, better, in better conditions, like in terms of speed in rural area compared to the urban and the county is able to charge for it. It also supports the fact that you want to probably attract the development more in the urban service area instead of having to build additional roads up in the rural area. So this is a phase implementation. Of course, that's a policy decision, again, at what percent you would adopt the fees. So I think that was a quick summary. I'll be happy to answer.
That was a quick summary, thank you very much. You made up a lot of time, so that's excellent, excellent. Questions? Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. As you know, and Ms. Garcis knows, I had met with you and asked a lot of questions prior, like back in, before December, before we ever met then. And I'd left some messages and tried to get a hold and talk again. And there, for whatever reasons, not an opportunity to do that. And I have a lot of things about the way, when I've looked closely at this study, that I have questions about. And I don't understand the metrics that were chosen and why they were chosen or how they're chosen. Because I think it really skews the study to show extraordinarily low cost per lane mile. And I'd like to just start by, I'd like to call up my aide, Laura Lawson. I want to put something on the projector. And truly, I just pulled these out this morning in the little time I had because I, you know, don't have time to do all this analysis. But, and this is just some of the questions I had. So the first, the first graph that we put up is a graph that you put for construction cost for Hillsborough County roadway improvements. And that you use BASEIT to do your calculations on the cost per lane mile. And I just want to draw the board's attention to the fact that on this graph table, B6 here, if you look down the start date, you can see that they start, these projects start in 2001, 2003. It's all dated. And so you don't, you get way down here before you get a project, 2011, 2014, 2015. Yet, all these costs are calculated from 20 years back. And I would say that roads 20 years back in Hillsborough County certainly cost a lot less. And I just don't understand why everything, it looks like from 2000 forward, like to me, I would just pick the last decade. So I'm just curious about the, what metric you use to choose? You know, it doesn't have to be like the last decade of roads. So you get something that's at least reasonably comparable to what we're paying now?
So statewide data, we use past seven years. We do that consistently in all our studies. We feel like it gives us a solid sample size. When we get to the local level, local governments don't build as many projects. So we go back until we feel like, okay, we are showing everything. are showing everything. And when you look at the cost figures, they are not consistently earlier year necessarily the lowest figures. I mean, it kind of bounces up and down. It was, I think, in that slide I showed you. So we try to get a, some comfort level that we are not basing everything on one and two projects, that we have some sample size and we have some level of consistency.
Well, when I calculate and look at this, and I'll go through more of this stuff about this, but if I, if I go from the last decade, two thousand and eleven to present, yes, it does go back and forth. But if I take those projects that were done in the last decade, and then I add them all up and divide them, I come up with something, instead of cost of construction per lane mile being three point three, one nine, I come out with something like six million point one, on and on. So almost, almost twice as much if I just take the last decade and just leave the decade from two thousand and ten, or two thousand to two thousand and ten out. But that's, that's just one thing that I think really skews the true cost of what this is. The other that I'd like to draw the board's attention to is here. And I don't understand this, and maybe there's some explanation for this. And I truly was just going through and started discovering this. And I, so I haven't had a chance, but since we had this opportunity, I wanted to ask. So we have like the Citrus Park extension there. And you can see there, it's got construction cost forty-six million, lane mile, four point three million. But then I went and I looked in the CIP, and I looked at our budget. And what I got for the Citrus Park extension there was not forty-six million, but fifty-two million. So I don't, and I had the same lane miles, I had the same projects. I don't understand the, the difference between the forty-six and the fifty-two.
If it's exactly the same section on the Citrus-
It is.
The only thing I can think of is that it may have been that when we collected the data, since then, they had changed orders and it may have increased. Because, you know, this is, this is the data that-
Right. So I think, but I think we need to correct some of this data then, if that's, if that's accurate. The second thing is the Van Dyke widening. That's also a project that we just had. And if you see here, we have that listed on here at twenty thousand. But if you go to the, the CIP-
Twenty million.
I mean, twenty million, I'm sorry. Twenty million. If you go to the CIP, you can see here, it's almost twice as much, thirty-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-eight. And that's just in those last five figures that I said would put it up almost twice as much. This would, if you change these, if the CIP is accurate and you don't have the latest information, it would change those calculations incredibly. So I think, and I would really feel very comfortable and can't see why it shouldn't be that we just do the last decade and not two decades back. I mean, it just doesn't seem a true and accurate pricing to do two decades of roads. I think it's really, to do it, the last decade is, would be fine. And to get the figures, those are just two figures I found, but to get the figures on those, to be accurate, might be a better projection truly of the cost per mile. The other, you know, you mentioned also other jurisdictions and your pricing and how Hillsborough County fared with regards to the other jurisdictions. And I just, I knew that that was a problem, but I, I pulled out this page, which I haven't given. This is table B8 that I have here. I didn't prepare for this or anything. I just sat here and I was looking at it because I knew it was a problem, but I haven't had time to really look. And this is construction cost, state road improvements from Hillsborough County and other jurisdictions. And what you said is ours are higher than other jurisdictions, which they are in some cases. I mean, it looks like half and half, you know, but there are, I mean, St. Lucie County has, what we have here is, oh, we just have Sam Allen Road in here. I see. It's, and here, you've got two different roads in here. State Road Forty-three for two, almost three million dollars. And then Sam Allen for six million dollars a lane mile. Those are the two roads you use.
We, we have another one on the other side.
Yeah. I, I think I didn't, I think I didn't pull-
State Road Forty-one, too.
Okay.
That's like a four, four point two million.
My, my point about this is, again, it's pulled from all over the state. And we have roads in here included that are like, you know, and it's just really doesn't make any, I don't see why we're looking at roads outside of Hillsborough County, quite honestly, because the costs here are, I think, the costs we should be paying attention to. But like, we have, like Duval, the Jacksonville National Cemetery Access Road, you know, and for one point seven million dollars a mile. It just doesn't, why that has to use, be used in a calculation of our costs, I don't, I don't really understand. And a lot of these costs, when you throw enough low cost in, you just skew the formula and it gets lower and lower. You know, it's like, it's a dilution that, to me, I don't really get why we would do that. Because it doesn't, to me, in any way reflect true costs. And I really want to know true costs.
So statewide, so we have limited sample in the local data. It's already, even when we go two decades, it's not that many projects when you cut it down. So to understand if that's a reasonable cost and better support it, you know, to, to be able to charge, we look at the other costs. So just like that one million, we have multiple projects that are seven million from other districts. And so it's not only adding lower costs. It's like any data available during a certain time period. And, you know, every county is very different. I mean, you are absolutely right that it's, none of them are exactly like Hillsborough County. It's a big range, but it's a lot of projects, you know, significant lane mile construction. So we can defend the number saying, look, even when we go outside and look, you know, people are building anywhere from two million to eight million. And this number is within the reasonable range to be able to start charging the new development. So that's the goal of it.
I, I understand, but I really think that it is, what that does is really skew the numbers that we get that make for accurate representation of true costs in Hillsborough County. My other is this, mobility, multimodal roadway impact fee comparison.
What page is that?
That is table seven. And it's page thirty-one, I think. It's kind, it's, looks like this. And if you look at that, and as you know, I think you were in the office when I did this, because I had challenged you on, on the numbers that you came up with for Pasco County. And I had handed you over the impact fees, the true mobility fees. I'll let you get to it. Oh, sorry, I just-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I had handed to you the impact fees that are online from Pasco County. And the numbers that I had at that time didn't accurately reflect the one hundred percent that you had on the charts at that time for what Pasco County had for their urban, suburban, and rural fees. Here, you've chosen not to put, you just put not available for the, the percentages for the urban, suburban, and rural fees. But they are available. And I even had that day discuss them with you and handed them. And I don't, I didn't have the time to go look it up and put it in here today. But it would be quite different if you had it at, if you were showing people what a hundred percent was just north of us in Pasco County. And I think it's important for the board to know that, because I think Pasco County is doing a far better job of reflecting true costs. And what that allows them to do in Pasco County is, when you have a true cost, let's say, because I think they had something in the rural area akin to, instead of ninety-eight-hundred, a hundred percent was something, if I remember right, was something like twenty-three thousand, which is extremely high. But what it allows you to do is if you, if you have costs like that, you can give discounts that you want to incentivize and put, and encourage development in the ways and areas that you want to do it. So what Pasco County has done, which I think is very laudable and really something we should be doing, and it is ten miles north of us, is that they have discounted transit-oriented development communities in their impact fees. They've discounted affordable housing. They've discounted certain areas that they wanted to target for redevelopment, which they've outlined. And they do, it's a very complex fee analysis. They have, some of this fee analysis, when I pulled out Sarasota in terms of rural and urban, they've had this-
Commissioner Kemp, we are actually over time, so, and I have more people in the queue. So could you help me?
Yeah. And I'll just say this, as to the affordable housing, I just like those, because I know that this is something we care about tremendously. You are allowed to discount those. You do not have to pay state law, I looked up the statute. You don't have to, for 2019, you don't have to make up for the discounts that you give. Those discounts can, are at the choice of your jurisdiction in terms of affordable housing.
Thank you very much. Those are excellent points. I'm glad, I'm glad you brought them up, because I have a follow-up to that question. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Oh, first of all, okay, is, Adam, can, can you answer one quick question for me just about the email that you sent with the backup? And, and, and don't go away, Ms., I'm gonna get, this impacts your presentation also. But you had this, you know, you showed us the differences between the new impact fees and the twenty nineteen assessed rates, right? This little table that you emailed us?
The email that showed what the assessments would be from 2019 if they were assessed at the rate in the mobility fee.
And so it looks like there's a, you know, there's a gain, there's a difference that we get like five million dollars more.
Approximately seven.
Hmm.
Yes.
And, and, and so are you comparing, when you say twenty nineteen assessed rates, is that the current fees at ninety percent, or eighty percent, or a hundred percent?
It was at the, I believe it was at the seventy percent-
Seventy percent.
Assessment, yes.
Thank you. That's all I need. And then, well, the new one then is at a hundred percent?
Yes. And we did it calendar year nineteen because that seventy percent rate was carried through the calendar year.
Right. Okay. So it's not exactly apples to apples when you do it that way. I mean, and, and I have the same issue with the chart in, that's in their report, too, where they compare the current fee at eighty percent, which is where we are, to the projected fee at a hundred percent, which we may or may not vote to adopt it at a hundred. Who knows? The board may phase it in. So I think it's, it's a lot more instructive to see them a hundred percent to a hundred percent, because then you get a sense of the underlying stuff that goes into it, the costs, the trip miles, the trip lengths. Are they, are you really, are these fees really gonna be lower or higher at a hundred percent, rather than, of course, if you compare that one at seventy percent and this one at a hundred percent, well, you'd expect to see a little difference, you know. It's gonna, it's gonna be difficult to tell a real difference between the two fee structures.
And for context, the reason that email was sent was that was budget information that was requested for purposes of the agenda item. So it was accurate to what was information that was requested.
Yes. I just want to, you know, it is a little confusing, so I just wanted to point that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do have a couple of issues in the, you know, the thing is that the big picture, the results were so different than, than what I expected, that that's when I started getting into, well, how would that be? Well, wait, the, the estimated mileage is not what I would expect. And the cost estimates seem too low. And then when you get into, well, why is that? I mean, you're saying in your report, the estimated mileage driven by residents of new development is roughly the same in the urban and rural area, and it's about five to seven miles each trip. I mean, I find that unbelievable. I know that many people coming to live in the new subdivisions in South County will be driving to work in Tampa. We just approved, well, we, this board just approved two one-thousand-house subdivisions west, east of Wy Mama. There's, there's no jobs there. Those people will be driving over thirty miles to work every day. I know because I drive thirty-one miles one way to Tampa every day, thirty-one miles. It's thirty-two miles for the thousands of people driving from Fish Hawk to jobs at McDill. It's, it's much farther than five to seven miles for most people to get from South County to Tampa, even farther if they're going to the university area or the west shore area. I just, but then I start looking into the, the data, and I find in the, you know, the trip length, the same things, kinds of things that Commissioner Kemp was finding. I find that you are using lists that, you know, you're averaging trip lengths, including shopping center trips in two thousand and six in Bozeman, Montana. I mean, that has nothing to do with the trip lengths of the people. We're trying to figure out the cost of their impacts on our roads. Office building trips in nineteen ninety-two in Gwinnett County, Georgia, have nothing to do with an office center in Sable Park in 2020. And, and then finally drilling down, I found the same kind of gaps that Commissioner Kemp was finding, where although you, I know you're trying to use the most recent ITE data in your table A21 on page A18, there are a couple of anomalies similar to the thing she was finding where it says there's no change for single-family detached. In fact, that was on your slide you showed us. So it was zero percent change. It's at seven dollars and eighty-one cents, or no, seven eighty-one trip rate. But the ITE says, the most recent ITE says that's now changed to nine point four, four-four. There was other ones like that. I don't have time either to drill into this. And I think it would behoove the staff to vet this a little bit, cast a little eye over, just spot checking before it gets to us, especially when the, the result seems so different than what you would expect. And, and also the cost estimates, I was noticing that, too. And in that list that Commissioner Kemp showed of the costs going all the way back to two thousand and one projects, I saw that you threw out the three highest cost projects. But they didn't throw out the three lowest cost projects. So you're looking at the, the lowest costs of very past projects. And I just think that that's part of the reason we're getting results that, that we wouldn't expect of, of lower impact fees for almost everybody except for affordable housing, which, which goes up. And, and so finally, also the credits. I, I'm not gonna get all into that, but I do, I have been really having a problem of the ad valorem credit. And I asked the attorneys to look into any kind of contingency we could at least use on the surtax credit, although I really don't think either, that when you walk through a builder building a house, being charged an impact fee, whether he passes that on to the next person or not, how, how does it make sense to say, all right, well now, that builder didn't have, is getting a discount for the property taxes, the, the resident is paying for the next twenty years? You know, I mean, why does, why does the one have anything to do with? The other is the, if you build a house in Wy Mama and you're, you're charging impact fees for the, the impacts on Sable Drive, why should you discount the eight hundred twelve million dollar ad valorem program paying for widening Van Dyke Road or some other, why doesn't that person pay him right along with us for those property taxes? Why is, and why is finally the developer getting the discount for ad valorem taxes that are being used to widen some other road in another part of the county? That's not what the impact fee pays for. So why that would be discounted is just not making any sense to me at all. And I, and I'm still hoping that we'll find a way to, to maybe stay with the old study while we fix this one and yet close the RP2 loophole, which we wanted to do. We were just waiting for this. And this has taken a lot longer than we thought. So, but let's get, let's get that part done.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Would you like to respond, or shall I give you my summary of sort of her question and Commissioner Kemp's question that you might be able to answer at the same time?
Okay.
Okay. So earlier in the presentation, you stated that, you know, what type of project will the county build? And then ascertain the costs associated with that to build, you know, to what it's going to cost, and that's what we're using as part of your formula, right? So if our new road design specs for the policies we want to adopt include the elements of Vision Zero sidewalks, congestion management, safety, you know, the network expansion are all in our specs for any road that's built in the future, why would you add or deduct a credit for a tax that was designed to address a deficit? Because much of the road work in what we've heard from our Metropolitan Planning Organization, that the revenue is recently, you know, passed by voters, but, you know, just either way, what we talked about yesterday, you know, to make sure that we're taking care of those deficits that we have. If it's apples to apples, if the spec is there, and we're going to build that road that way, and then giving a credit for what the design requirement requires, aren't we always going to end up with a shortfall in revenues to generate our transportation needs, infrastructure? I mean, if it's apples to apples, you indicated, I'm sorry, what type of project will the county build? That's how we determine our cost. So that was the first part of the question. The second part of the question is if, as noticed, we had to go to a new road design spec model, right, in 2017? And we have, or will have, or could possibly have in the future, having to look back three years or five years to determine, you know, if our rates are charged, what we're charging for our rates in order to address any changes in our impact fees. So why don't we just use the construction costs from '17 to present, which would address the concerns that, you know, are we charging what it really costs versus what we want to think it costs? And are we using the methodology we now require to use as specs under the ITE, or whatever it's called? Why are we using that methodology for determining what road design specs need to be in terms of deciding what our rates ought to be calculated out, or what factors we can use? If we were using '17 forward along with the proper specs we're supposed to use for road design, then that eliminates all the noise about whether or not we are charging the right amounts, or, and addresses the issue that we're designing for failure. Because if we're not building roads that address what we need, and we're not charging the fees for the design that we need, irrespective of the deficit, how do we get there?
No, if you.
So I, that was, and I want to hear your answer, but then I want to ask our attorney, because we're running out of time, or we're overtime by quite a bit. As the ordinance moves forward at hearing that references this study, I need to know the chicken and the egg thing. If we don't have, if we have some agreement on how the methodology works, and that can be addressed, and provided 10 days before the hearing, and we have a chance to discuss that at the hearing, can we move forward? If we don't, how do we proceed? And that's my concern, is I want to get that from you. But can you help me with my question? Because I think it wraps up your issue as well as yours. Are you on the same page?
No. If you have project specs that change, and you have a program that shows this is the new cost, we can absolutely incorporate that cost.
I'll try to be as brief as I can. I've been told that I get complicated. So we've been doing this for 30 years. We probably did 60 of these. And we have questions that come after us after we get fees adopted. One is, you're using $4 million in the impact fee, and all your CIPs based on $3 million, you got to cut a 30-year projects out of your CIP, and you didn't do it. So when we adjust this fee or this cost, you need to go cut half your projects out of your CIP, because you just decided the ones that your staff's using is incorrect. And then we got to go to the long-range plan, because somebody's going to pull it up and say, you're using $3 million in a long-range plan, and you can't build but half of it. Your long-range plan is worthless. You've tinkered with the impact fee. So we sat down carefully with your staff and said, well, you had a couple bids here, we got eight here, and this is what's going to worry else. Do you want to start budgeting $4.5 million rather than $3 million for roadways? Because if you don't want to do that, and you don't want to cut half your projects, we don't want to put $4.5 million. And they said, no, we're not ready to cut half our projects out of the CIP, not based on those two or three projects, because they had this, this, and this. So we did sit down with your staff. That number is a number we think is reasonably using your CIP and your long-range plan, and if you want to modify it, the impact fee needs to be integrated, and we need to be able to answer all the questions. So I would suggest maybe a workshop, where if you want to adjust estimated fees by 30 or 40%, we need to highlight to you, wow, you're going to cut half your sales tax projects out, because they're under a budgeted. You need to take half your road length miles out of your long-range plan, because they're budgeted at 2.5. And somebody's going to walk in and jump all over us, maybe go to court, because we picked a number, and we weren't consistent. So we looked at it. We looked at the data we had, which I think you may be looking at data we didn't have. And maybe the staff is willing to go from 3.5 to 4, or 4.5, and cut a third of their projects out. But that needs to be done very carefully. I think what you've got is really sound, because we do long-range plans, we do the CIPs, we do the impact fee, and I'm telling you, they will come out of the woodwork if we don't match those threes together, and they're matched right now. We checked all that. So I don't think it's bad to go take a new set of data and make up your mind whether you want to take the last two or three bids and make some major changes in what you think you're going to get done. But that's a pretty big decision, and you might want to do that in a workshop, not just saying that here's two or three projects, and we found something a little different than what you spent six months working with your staff on to draw that conclusion. And the two things we deal with is, if you start tinkering with this, you're going to get extreme variations. So three years from now, if you get four bids that got cut in half, your fees are going to go down by 50%. Because we decided to use three years' worth of bids, and the last three bids were really cheap, they happened to be in this area. We're going to cut the fees in half. And then the next three years, the fees are going to jump, because we're not looking at the right sample size. So we looked at sample size, we looked at all your bids, statewide bids, we talked to your staff about what they want to budget the CIP, we checked the LRTP. All that needs to be adjusted if you want to say that in the last six months a year, we think things have changed so much that we're ready to modify all those documents. So I just suggest to you, be very careful. Let us work your staff, have a workshop, and if you're going to adjust it, we need to be really careful of doing it, and we'll do it in such a way I think you feel real comfortable, and you know we've got your back covered in terms of any discussion comes out from anybody from the outside.
Could you identify yourself with the record, please?
And the same thing applies to the sales tax credit. And so I know it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you have to state your name, sir.
Oh, I'm Steve Tindell with Tindell Aller. My first impact fee was 1986, and I started working in Pasco County in 1990. If you'd like, I can spend one minute and talk to you about what was done in Pasco County. Pasco County had, one is they get about 15% of their traffic on interstate, you have 40%. They're not going to spend a billion dollars on the interstate in Pasco County, and you are. So we can take the Pasco County exact equation, and we can run it for you, and the fee may come down. Because the massive capacity being added on that interstate, and the tolls is going to just blow up, that they were able to do it, their rule, they got like 15% of their traffic on interstate, and they were doing right-of-way dedications, and they basically calculated a fee, they can negotiate the value with intent, and they set it up front of adopting like a $9,000 or $10,000 fee. So that calculation is there for right-of-way negotiations. It's not an adopted number. And I don't think they've had any intent of adopting it. I think I can say that openly. So we know what they did. We can run the same numbers for you and show you in this county, it doesn't work.
Steve, as long as you're there. So the other important thing, you know, Pasco County's impact fees were mentioned, but what wasn't mentioned is the way that they buy down those impact fees. They use general fund revenue. So they're using taxpayer money, ad valorem, sales tax money, to buy down those high-impact fees. That's not what we want.
No, I agree.
So that's half the story. So, you know, we hired this firm because they've been at this a long time. They know what they're doing. A big part of this, both on the fee side and on the surtax credit side, is to build a line of defense against what we know will come when you start jacking up fees. So, yes, Cameron will tell you, there's no state law, there's case law, and he will tell you that you can do whatever you want as an elected body. You don't have to have any credits for anything. But guess what? What he will tell you next is we're going to end up in court, and I'm not going to finish that sentence.
I understand.
So what we're trying to do is provide a professional advice. We brought competent counsel, competent consultants. In the end, it's your decision, but we're going to also tell you, just like Mr. Bice did, or The Economist, there are consequences to those decisions. We're laying in the record now, we are laying in the record those consequences, so that in the future, if this ever comes back to bite us, I want Steve to have it in the record, I want me to have it in the record, that we've given you good advice, do whatever you want.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I apologize for going too long.
No, 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 you're fine. But unfortunately, we do need to wrap up, because I had indicated we were going to be done by four, which was 30 minutes past when we were going to be done originally. Out of respect for everybody's time, I think I do need the answer to that question. If we are going to set policy to require Vision Zero specs being designed, be included, that we include elements of sidewalks, elements of congestion management, all of those things in our new road policies, how that flavors the new specs that are required by the ITE? So that needs to be addressed in your report. But before, and there's, to his point, we do need to workshop this conversation, whether, and that belies the issue associated with, how do we move forward on our hearing date if the document hasn't been, nor our opportunity to address the Economist's report, nor the modeling that we are looking at, to come up with a real number? Because our business owners, our developers, our partners in addressing our shortfall in housing need to know, need to have some certainty.
And that was my recommendation for bringing in The Economist and bringing in Tishler Bice, so this board could have all the facts. But there was momentum on the board by some members to move this forward quickly. I don't think that's prudent. I think, so, yes, we haven't had increases in impact fees for years. That doesn't mean that you then do something in a knee-jerk and make a bad decision when you don't have all the facts.
I understand.
So I don't think we're ready for March 4th.
I understand, but I'm not willing to wait a year for the series of comprehensive plan adjustments that we're looking at. I need the methodology to match. And it also needs to use current economic data of cost, because by discounting the actual cost factors, by as much as is done in this report, by going back so far, you know, even 10 years, but, you know, that seems irresponsible, because I'll guarantee you, our road builders are not going to accept 10-year-old, you know, repayment for services. So some level of reasonableness in our assumptions, I think, is really important for us to consider moving forward. And we don't have time on our calendar for a workshop between now and the hearing, do we?
We do. We have a workshop scheduled for March 20th. It's not waiting years. We can do this probably on April 4th with all the other impact fees. So we're not talking about waiting another year. We're just talking about giving everyone a chance to pull this together. We can have more than one workshop between now and April 4th. There's just, there's one scheduled for March 20th. I think it's March 20th. But we could schedule some more if you want. It's worth spending the time, clearly. I mean.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you. I'm sorry. I thought I was trying to wrap up by 4 o'clock, so I apologize. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
What else? What other words it was?
No. So to answer your question, as we talked about yesterday, the public hearing, you did set it for the 4th, but we did that with the awareness that we might have to open the public hearing on March 4th and then continue it. And I think that's kind of where we are. We'll continue it to April 1st, and then we'll have the workshop March 20th, or more workshops between now and April 1st, so we can get this done and make a decision. We're not that far away. Just need a little bit more time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Merman?
I'll have to make this brief. You know, I did want to say a few things. Number one, I know, because I've talked to Catherine Starkey a lot about how Pasco is doing and what they're doing up there, and it is apples and oranges, really, from what we are proposing here. If we want to compare ourselves to them, that's fine, but honestly, they contribute their money from GR into a TIF, and honestly, I just, you're right. I don't see how that works for Hillsborough County. And another thing is there will be legislative influence. We'll know by mid-March what that will be and what we can and can't do. And number three is we are absolutely not ready to go forward with a public hearing. And we have to, we're just going to have to take our time on this. This is too big of a policy, too big of a jump. It's got to be right. We have to do it right, and we need to hear from the public, of course, but, and then move forward.
Commissioner Kemp, please keep it brief, because we've got to go.
Sure. I know. I just like to, actually, my point that you made, Commissioner Smith, was the first point I started at and didn't make is that the three highest-cost roads were taken out of the formula, which I did not understand at all. So I'm just wondering about corrections like that, at least. But secondly, I do, I will continue to say, we should pull the RP2. It's a separate section. It's a special discount that was given. That should just be dealt with separately, because this is a longer issue, and we should just get that, because we are losing millions of dollars every week that passes by. We're losing millions of dollars, millions, in all kinds of fees that really we have not had for decades to put forward in our infrastructure, and we're all suffering in this community because of that.
Okay. I think that was the last one in the queue. I would like to ask staff to get back to us with our alternatives and an opinion on if we were to maintain the earlier hearing date, how we would address the need to address the study that's referenced in the ordinance, so how that might work.
And only briefly, what I would say to that is the ordinance is 100% dependent on the study.
Right. That's my concern. Okay, great. With that, I will call the meeting adjourned.